At eight, well, at eight thirty-one PM and just state that no motions or actions were taken in executive session. Move on to item number ten, discussion and take possible action regarding police union contract. And again, Warren, correct me if I don't have this correctly. Entertain a motion to approve the appropriations and language for the police union contract dated July first, twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Is that okay, Warren? Warren, you're on mute.
Still on mute.
Still muted, Warren.
That's fine.
Very, okay. That's fine, okay, Warren says fine. All right, so can, I have a motion and a second for that. Motion by Bob Finley, second by Al Bruno. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, stained, cheer votes aye, motion passes six-zero. Thank you very much, everyone. Okay, item number eleven is appointments. We have one appointment before us tonight, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the appointments dated October sixth, twenty twenty. Motion by Chris, second by Bob. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, stained, cheer votes aye, motion passes six-zero. Item number twelve is tax refunds and abatements. We actually have two before us. So draw your attention to the one on, for September fifteenth, twenty twenty. We'll entertain a motion to approve that tax collector's report as presented by Susan Bowen of our tax office. A motion by Bob, second by Anne Marie. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, stained, cheer votes aye, motion passes six-zero. Also entertain a motion to approve the October sixth, twenty twenty tax collector's report as presented by Susan Bowen of our tax office. Motion by Anne Marie. Second by Bob Finley. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, stained, cheer votes aye, motion passes six-zero. Item number thirteen is transfers. We have no transfers before us. Item number fourteen is correspondence. We have a few pieces of correspondence, some from the last meeting and then a couple of new pieces. We have the check register. We have a, just some information from our tax collector, Dana Flock. And again, I asked her to take a look at how we are comparing overall collection-wise. We have collected about three hundred thousand dollars more in total than we had at this point or the end of September through fiscal year, the previous fiscal year, which is a positive. That's not a full indication of the budget number itself. Right now, we are trending slightly below target, which again, with everything going on with COVID, that is, that is certainly a great thing to be where we are. We had anticipated being substantially worse than that, so that's a positive. We have a letter from Keith Rosenfeld, who is our town planner, which is sent to Department of Transportation. We're having some roadwork done and we're trying to include sidewalks in that. DOT asked that a letter be sent to do that, essentially naming all of Bang Street as part of our downtown. We have the eight twenty-four referral letter from Keith as well for Holbrook. He put Holbrook Street, but it's Holbrook Road. We have a letter from Rich, his office, for governor's executive order. Again, just kind of giving an update on that, and that has to do with the violations and things. And then I'll read this into the record because this is just important. This was dated October nineteenth, which I'm not sure why it's dated October nineteenth, but it's to myself and to all of you. After many enjoyable years as Seymour Town Treasurer, I must regretfully submit my resignation. I have recently moved out of town and according to the town's lawyers' interpretation of the Seymour Town Charter, I am no longer eligible to serve in this position. It has truly been an honor to serve the town of Seymour for all these years. I would like to thank the many first selectmen of the town who have appointed me treasurer over the years. It's been a pleasure to work alongside all the wonderful people at Town Hall, particularly those in the Finance Department. Sincerely, John K. Fedor. So John has been a longtime treasurer of the town of Seymour, goes back even prior to me being first selectman. And John has certainly served this community very well. He has moved out of town, so there will be a new treasurer put in front of you at the next meeting as a part of appointments. Okay, so that closes item number fourteen. We'll go on to public comments. Rory had some public comments. It was asked that that public comment be held until the second public comment. So Rory, how many pieces of public comment do you have?
I have three.
Okay, so what we'll do is we'll have you state the person's name and address for the record and then read the comments and then we'll just move on to the next. So we'll go through the three that you have.
There are some people present who requested to do live public comment as well. So we can let them go first.
Well, let's, let's do the written first, so that way that's taken care of, and then we'll just grab the live people. So for those of you that want us, wanted to speak live, make sure Rory is aware and then he'll just call you in order.
Okay. The first comes from Richard Demko. I would like to take a moment to extend my sincerest gratitude to Kurt Miller for his years of impeccable service to the town. It has been a pleasure serving on the Board of Finance under his administration and he will be greatly missed. Throughout Kurt's tenure, he did a phenomenal job stabilizing our town's finances and developing plans to continue moving our town positively forward into the future. I wish him the very best on all his endeavors and I'm confident saying that whoever Kurt is working for is very lucky to have the services of someone who has shown the highest regard to the people to whom he works with. With that said, I would also like to say that I am very confident that whoever is appointed by the Board of Selectmen to serve as Kurt's replacement will continue the great work that Kurt did as each one of our selectmen are a part of a team who contributed to making our town a better place to live, work and educate our children. Once again, Kurt, congratulations and good luck in all you do. The second one is submitted on behalf of the Seymour Republican Town Committee. On behalf of the Republican Town Committee, we would like to extend our thanks and appreciation to Kurt Miller for serving the people of our town with the utmost dignity and respect. Throughout the years, you have been an example of what true strong leadership is all about. Your contributions to our town and your legacy will carry on well into the future. Our town will continue to thrive thanks to the hard work you put forth in stabilizing our town's finances and the work you and your administration did, making Seymour the great little town we are. We are proud of everything you have done and it's been an honor and privilege to have you as our party's candidate and elected leader. We would also like to thank the entire Miller family for their support throughout Kurt's tenure. We understand that the long hours, the stress and all that comes with the job may have been difficult at times and we sincerely appreciate your understanding and willingness to share Kurt with the people of the town. Kurt, we know that you will do great things, whoever you work with, and we wish you the best of luck in all that you do. And the third comes from Paula Chapla. Kurt, many thanks for your leadership over the years as first selectman. Keeping the town on a good financial path can be attributed to your financial acumen and has been beneficial for the residents. I wish you luck in your new position. Congratulations and best wishes to you and yours.
Okay, that was certainly making me blush. Okay, so Rory, we have some live people, so I don't know what order they've raised their hand in. But if you want to just call them out and then whomever Rory calls, please just state your name and address for the record. And again, two minutes, please, we need to follow the same rules we've established all along, so Rory, go ahead.
Sure, Nicole, why don't you go first?
Thanks Rory, Nicole Clarida Stetrea, twenty-three, Osprey Drive, Seymour. Kurt, what can I say? You've accomplished so many things in the short nine years you've been our first selectman. I could be here for hours explaining all the things you've done for our great town, from increasing our fund balance to reducing our debt, improving our roads and infrastructure. You've increased our bond rating from double A minus to a near-perfect double A plus and having six consecutive budget surpluses. None of this, as you know, could have been accomplished without the amazing team you've had by your side. While I was involved and even after me, none of this would have, would have happened without your team. I can count on one hand how many times this board voted anything else but unanimous for, and they were for minor things. I think Al voted against appointment of someone at some point. But that, that's a testament to what you've done with this town because they all think alike, fiscally responsible, doing the right thing for our town, and that's because of your sound, common sense leadership. And I'm sure that the woman that replaces you will continue with those same sound practices that you and your team have done throughout the years in Seymour. I wish you the best of luck in your nesting, next endeavors. We're gonna miss you and hopefully you'll start to return some texts in a timely fashion now that you're not so busy in Seymour. I love you and good luck with everything.
Thank you. I'm not gonna get through this.
And we're not, we're not the only two that are crying, yay!
Yeah. And actually welling up a little bit, I didn't think I would, but.
And I believe Themis wanted to speak as well.
I need tissues. Seriously, it was gonna be how this is. Hi Kurt and everybody, thank you so much for letting me say a few words. You know, it's, it's interesting to me and, and such a sense of pride to have somebody in the town that I grew up in that my family still lives in and is so proud of. Take a position for so many years and, and have done so much to make us proud, to be from Seymour, to make Seymour better than it was when he took it over, to make it an affordable place, a place that we can be proud of. As an elected official myself, I know, I see a lot of people come and go every day in this world. They get elected and a lot of times not for the right reasons. But you've done this, you started doing it, you finished doing it because you have it in your heart, you have a passion and love for this town and this state, and every day you have been there, you put Seymour first. And even though we've all been very thankful to your family, to your wife, to your children, to your mom and your dad, we know that Seymour is your second family. And if it wasn't, you couldn't have done the job you've done, so thank you so much. I'm proud of you as your friend. I'm proud of you as somebody from Seymour to somebody else who's from Seymour and has that love for their family and their town and all the amazing things you've done. And I look forward to all the amazing things you'll do in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Rory, who's next?
Nicole and I have been, how long it's gonna be till you cry?
I believe that's it, unless anybody.
That's it. Okay, well, that, that was enough. I will hold my comments to, to the very end, but we'll go to selectmen's public comments and we'll go as always in the order you appear on my screen, which is random as it gets. So Bob Finley, you are up first.
I already told you I was gonna miss you, so I'm not gonna say anything about that. No, I did, I did want to do a shout out for the Seymour Pink event that went on this October first to the fourth. It was a tremendous way to get through, you know, COVID and still have an event for that group. It was very successful for them. I attended the, the after-party, which is the Zoom after-party that they had. And they did a very good job fundraising, in fact, in equal to other years, probably not in, in dollars, but very, very close, and it was virtual, so they did a great job and very proud of the Seymour Pink organization.
Thank you, Bob. Chris Bowen.
Start with the shout outs. First off, thank you, you know, obviously Bob beat me to the Seymour Pink. I saw everybody going around on their virtual five Ks and ten Ks, and that was tremendous just to see that as I was going out and about town. So that's number one. I am beyond grateful for everything you've done for this town, everything you've done for this board and everything that you've done for me personally. I reached out to all the members of the Board of Selectmen when I first got onto the board and you spent hours with me, talking to me at the diner. And I'll take the things that we talked about to my grave, but it was just a lot of good advice, a lot of good wisdom, and you've continued to do that this whole time. You have earned the right to go out on your terms. I fully thank you for everything that you've done for this town. I'm grateful to your family for your, for their patience, because we all know this is not easy on families. And thank you sincerely for bringing this town beyond partisanship, beyond blind, dumb partisanship and making this a professionally run town. Thank you sincerely for everything that you've done for us and best of luck in your future endeavors.
Thank you, Chris, I appreciate that. Rob Van Agen.
So I had written something so that I could stay on track, and I'm gonna be honest, I wanna keep the positive theme of everything going on because I think you know that everyone who's here appreciates everything you've done. I do wanna respond, as Chris and I are members of the DTC, I do wanna respond to what got posted. You know, Kurt, you know, I sent you a copy of this, heads up. So I am gonna read this and I do hope everyone kind of keeps an open mind to the end, understanding that I do support Kurt Miller, but just wanna get this out. Regarding the resignation and specifically the DTC's letter as such, I am viewing this through a few different lenses. As a citizen of Seymour, in a very general, not specific to this case manner, I don't approve of an elected official, especially the first selectman leaving midterm for a job opportunity. We all seek to do what's best for our family, but even after a few discussions about the business executive position model, I'm concerned it could set a precedent for a first selectman to leave for a quote-unquote better job. So that's just as a citizen with what's happening there. Regarding this particular situation, Kurt has worked so diligently, as has been stated over his past terms, to build the board and the town positions so that this town is running as an efficient machine. As such, the future of Seymour's success or failure doesn't rest on Kurt Miller. It rests on Rory, we all know that. But Kurt Miller has set it up so that he can leave midterm and things are just gonna continue on. Somebody else is gonna steer the boat, but he has built a massive ship. And no matter what, everyone needs to acknowledge and thank him for that. As a Democrat, as a member of the DTC, I recognize that a response to Kurt's leaving had to be made. The letter was a collaborative effort and I'm sure many members don't agree with all parts of it, including myself, but it is a response to an opposing party member leaving midterm. I'm sure if the opposite had happened with the Democrat, there would have been a response from the Republicans. It's inevitable. While the Charter does spell out how to handle a vacancy, it was meant in the case of an emergency or a loss and that the nominated Republican who fills is not elected by the people for that position, could even be somebody who was not elected at all for the Charter. As mentioned, I don't agree with Kurt leaving midterm, but I don't, also don't agree that a first selectman should hold no job, as was stated in the article, no other job, part-time or otherwise. I think a restriction like that limits our pool. And even though we don't wanna talk salary about things, the salary he gets for running a fifty-plus million dollar organization for any other company would be significantly higher. These are things to visit in the future. Finally, as a friend, I wish Kurt the absolute best to kind of mirror what Chris Bowen said. You have put in so much, yourself and your family's time into this place. You've left it in great hands. I don't wanna see you go for so many reasons, but I wish you the best where you do go. Luckily, you're gonna be close by and they got a couple of nice places to grab a bite there, so I'm sure we will, our paths will cross in the future and I wish you the absolute best. Thank you for everything you've done. You've, again, just Chris got there first, you've made this a completely, you know, nonpartisan board. This has just been people looking for what's for the best for Seymour. I've never felt stifled, I've never felt anything other than accepted and I thank you very much for everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Al?
Yeah, I'd like to, um, just start off with voicing my displeasure and disappointment with the Democratic Town Committee press release. I thought it was unnecessary and uncalled for. Shame on whoever drafted it and penned it because Kurt's leadership has always been inclusive and transparent. And I applaud him for always allowing everyone a voice in our democratic process, no matter what party you're affiliated with. To the point people have made here tonight, we have acted in unison quite a bit, probably, I'm guessing ninety-five percent of the time. So when I, when that DTC press release was brought to my attention, I felt betrayal for Kurt. I felt like it was a cheap shot with him going out the door. He deserves better. And so that's, that's all I wanted to say. You know, I've said my piece last meeting, kudos to Kurt for everything he's done for us as a community, has always kept it classy and professional, has never stooped to name-calling dirty politics. So I just wanted to, to thank you for that, Kurt, and respond to that press release, which I thought was really, really, just like I said, a cheap shot. Thanks.
Thank you, Al. Emery.
Well, like Rob said, keep it lighthearted, right? Kurt's last meeting, so let's keep it lighthearted. For the public work side, leaf blowing, grass clippings in town, is in the town ordinance not to blow it into the road. There is a town ordinance that leaf blowing, along with your glass, grass clippings, along with snow plowing cannot be pushed into the road. I just wanna let the residents know that, that there is a town ordinance for that. I'd like to thank Public Works on hanging up the banners and putting a pink striping up. My daughter went and pointed out my banner, which I didn't know that, uh, there was a banner for me, but it's over by as always, and I was quite surprised. So I wanted to thank them for putting the banners up. Public Works will be doing a leaf pickup as long as the leaves are in brown paper bags and they will start around the last week of November, the first week of December. Bulk pickup will be the last week in October and will resume in April. By schedule, each resident is allowed to receive one bulk pickup. If one needs to be, if they need more, then we can call Town Hall and have Tony look at it that way. I also wanna thank Town, the Public Works people for putting in about three hundred feet of drain pipe on High Street by the Colonial Manor apartment. That's gonna stop the flooding and icing that happens there. As well as Alex would like everybody to know, the Land Trust is looking to do more fireworks with the holiday scene and hoping that the Board of Selectmen will improve some invoices put forward and that they are working on a parade for Christmas. Right? In regards to the letter by the DTC, I have some comments on that. I would expect a little bit more professionalism. We've all served with Kurt, Kurt's been our leader since two thousand and eleven for almost nine years, almost ten years he's been on this board as our leader and we've always worked as a team. There's a couple of things that I have issue with, with that letter, and I know the DTC has many attorneys. Those attorneys have worked on town committees, they've worked as town attorneys, and I know for a fact that they did not approve of this letter. I know for a fact that they advised against the way the letter was written. I know that they advised and said that this was per the Charter. You have very smart attorneys on that DTC and I believe they did what the elders should do. However, Kurt is leaving us in the middle of his term. Do we like it? No. Rob, to correct you, John O'Toole left in nineteen ninety-nine halfway through his term. He left the town in a three-point-three-million-dollar deficit along with a five-hundred-thousand-dollar sewer assessment fee that went missing. It wasn't given to the sewer authorities. So a Democrat did do it and Frank Conroy, bless his soul, did take over and not one Republican voiced in opposition, not one Republican sat there and said it's not right, not one Republican said that's not fair. He left to go work for Northeast Utilities. So a Democrat did do it. The voters did speak. So letter, the voters did speak in two thousand and nineteen, they spoke in two thousand and seventeen when we were all put on this board. When the voters speak as who they want to be their leaders, they put the Board of Selectmen in as their leaders. We as the Board of Selectmen are their votes. We speak for them. So we as a board on the twentieth have to vote in the next person to take on the board, the first selectman's position. So they did. And the, as far as the Charter, as like the attorneys on the D, on the DTC stated, section three-point-four did say that he's doing this by, by correctly by the Charter. Three-point-four A states it must be a full-time position. First selectman's position has always been a full-time position. When first selectman Bohuniac was on the Board of Selectmen, he and first selectman, selectwoman Sannick, God rest her soul, had asked questions about the first selectman's hours, office hours. And counsel came back and stated that as a CEO of a company, there is no time card for him to punch. There is no set office hours. He needs to be available to the taxpayers, he needs to be available to the employees of the town. And Kurt has always been available, and I'm sure the next person, whoever takes that position, will be. There's nothing in Charter that says that the selectman couldn't do a side job. As Kurt, as we know that his position is eighty-five thousand dollars a year. So someone, whoever it is, does something on the side, that's on them. The Charter clearly states that, and for those conditions to be put in was outrageous because the DTC, Stefan Bohuniac, who wrote the letter or who submitted the letter, I should say, knows that because he was given legal counsel, we had to pay extra money for that. The citizen, as I said, the citizens voted in, voted in the first selectman. I just wanna make sure I have all my notes, sorry. Whoever handed this massive responsibility, it's not a gift, it's a responsibility. It's a responsibility. And I can understand the not wanting to answer to another boss. I get that. But I understand the First Selectmen has 16,000 bosses. The taxpayers are the First Selectmen's boss, just like the taxpayers are State Rep Nicole Dietrich's boss. The governor is not her boss. The governor is not the First Selectmen's boss. The taxpayers are our boss. We are voted into office by the constituents. For the community to be successful, I don't even need my notes off of this. For the community to be successful, it's driven by a team. Kurt has led this team, not just the Board of Selectmen team, but he's also been on the Board of Finance. He's led this team. He's never once in the time that he's been on the board, has he ever, ever said, "I did this. I got us to where we are." It has always been the team has got us to where we are. The team being us, the board. This is small-town USA, Seymour. I didn't grow up here. I moved here. But when I moved here, I felt like this was my home. Kurt has made it, not them against ours. This isn't like the Board of Selectmen from the 90s, from the 80s, from the 70s. Or even when I was served in 2007. When I was on the board in 2007 and 2009, it was the Democrats against the Republicans. Since Kurt takes office, it's not a D against an R. Like State Rep Nicole said, five times, I can count on my hands how many times we went against each other. It's not right. Again, with the amount of knowledge that the Democrat Town Committee has with all the attorneys, and I know that they spoke against this letter. I know personally. I heard personally. I spoke to them personally. This letter was based on facts. This letter was based on blinded opinions because or upset because Kurt was leaving. Kurt has taken this town to where it's never been before, under anyone's leadership, except for maybe Scott Barton's. But even then, we're in a better position than we are. I not only found the letter attacking Kurt, but I felt very offended myself after it was sent to me for me to read because you basically slammed the whole Board of Selectmen, whoever drafted this letter, whoever put that in. You basically said it was backdoor dealing. There was no backdoor dealing by me or anybody on this board. We, as a team, picked the next leader to continue Kurt's legacy, to continue to move this town forward, to continue to strive to make it better and better and better. And either we're gonna do it together as a team or we're all gonna fail. If one is successful, we're all successful. Kurt's successful because he built us. We're successful because he built us. If one fails, we all fail. Kurt, look at me. I hate you for making me cry for the past two weeks. I'm gonna miss you, but I know you're not gonna be too far away. I love you and I wish you the best of luck, jerk.
Thank you. Well, no. I believe this is 276 meetings, I believe is the number. And I've been thinking the last couple of weeks about what I might say about this, you know, particularly with the events that have happened you know, over the last few days, which have been very disappointing to me and the fact that we've always worked so well together. We've always had open lines of communication. We've tried to make sure that everybody had a say, whether we agreed with the opinion or not. And you know, I was personally offended by it. It felt like a cheap shot at me just to try to score some political points. You know, maybe I overreacted in certain places. If I did, I publicly apologize for that, but you know, after nine years of this being a team, it was just a little insulting to me that something like that would be put out there, but I don't want that to dominate tonight. You know, not many people are fortunate enough to, you know, live out a dream and I know it's kinda corny, but I always wanted to be First Selectman and I knew when I was first coming up, the guys, you know, that trained me, the John Conroy's, the Bob Kennedys, you know, they instilled in me that no one person can do this by themselves, that you need to have a strong team of people around you. And you know, I have been blessed from day one to have the people that I've had around me and with me to be able to accomplish all that we have. And I know that I get the credit for it because I'm the First Selectman, but you know, I've said it before and I'll continue to say it over and over again, I would not have been able to accomplish what I have with this town if it wasn't for that team of people and that's you know, all you folks, professional staff, friends, family. Yeah, and all of you have made mention of my family and what they've given up. And you know, a lot of that comes to why I'm making the decisions that I'm making. You know, I've given 20-plus years to this town in politics, starting way back on the Parks Board. I've missed a lot of my son's stuff because I was at the events and things and you know, my daughter's in eighth grade now and I don't wanna miss her high school years. I wanna be able to go up and and see my son's, you know, fencing tournaments and things like that. It's you know, maybe it's a little selfish of me that I'm stepping down at this point, but it's what I needed to do for my family, what I needed to do for myself. And the only reason I'm able to do that is because of the team of people that I'm leaving behind. This town is not gonna miss a beat. On Wednesday morning at 8:00 AM, October 21st, the doors are gonna be unlocked on Town Hall and this town is going to keep right on moving forward. And it's because of the people that are here. They have worked so hard to change the system. It's not about one person, but it's about the town of Seymour. And that's the thing that makes me the proudest, that we did this together. Very infrequently was a vote on the Board of Selectmen, not 7-0. And that's the way it should be because it's not about politics. It's about the town of Seymour. And for those of us that have, you know, grown up, been here our whole lives, I mean, hell, I bought the house two up the street from my parents. So for basically 45 of my 50 years of existence, I lived on the same street and I'm proud to say that I'm from Seymour. I'm proud to say that I'm from the Valley, that this is my hometown. And to have the ability to, you know, have a positive effect on the town is something that I will, you know, I'll never forget. I've made a lot of great friends along the way. I've had some friends with me that I've known since, you know, I was a kid. It's great that, you know, Themis and Nicole are both here. We've known each other since we were we were kids and it's great to, you know, to have those childhood friends, you know, just take a few minutes and and just come out tonight. It means more to me than you guys will ever know. I'm not a crier, but I am I'm teetering a little bit on the edge because again, it's this opportunity that this town has blessed me with is just more than I can ever explain. Again, this town has given me more than I will ever be able to give back to it and for this short period of time, it's it's been great to be able to lead such a great group of dedicated people that truly just care about what's in the best interest of the of the town of Seymour. And you know, I'm not going that far away. I'm still going to stay involved. But again, it's going to be just to continue to assisting the town any way that I can. But I don't know. I was gonna write something. I started to, but I thought it would be better if I just kinda spoke from the heart and and kinda said what's important to me. So to all the members of the Board of Selectmen that we've that have been here over the nine years, to all of you, thank you for all the time and effort that you have put in. Again, I feel comfortable leaving in this town in the hands that it's in because I know that you guys will continue the good work, continue moving the town forward and I don't know, it's not often I'm at a loss for words, but this is, you know, this is one of those times. I just, again, thank my family for the opportunity. Thank all of you. I love all you guys for, you know, the support and dedication. I will have a little bit more free time, so to on Nicole's point. You know, I'll probably get to things within two or three days now as opposed to a week or so on some of those text messages and phone calls. But I'm, you know, looking forward to new challenges ahead and, you know, I'm excited for the future. And I guess that's it. So again, thank you very much to to everybody out there. So with that, Brian and Lester's, anything we may have missed that you wanna add?
Nothing further, Mr. First Selectman. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, it's been an honor and a privilege to serve with all of you. I wish you all the best of luck going forward and should you need anything, please feel free to let me know. So with that, I will entertain a motion. Motion by Anne Marie, second by the leaning in Al Bruno. And it's sung as well. You're gonna miss that. You're gonna miss that. Yeah. All right, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, stained. Cheer votes, I motion passes 6-0. Have a great night, everyone. And again, thank you very much from the bottom of my heart. Thanks, everybody.